Good afternoon. This is the first meeting of the Town Council Code of Conduct Subcommittee. Today is Wednesday, January the 5th in the new year 2022. And with us in the meeting are my co-council colleagues, Don Anderson and Connor O'Shea. And we have been tasked by the president to look over a proposed addition to our council rules, specifically rule, what would be a new rule, Rule 15 entitled "Council Conduct." And previous to this meeting, a couple of months ago, all councillors were asked to submit their reactions or give input on where they thought there might need to be some tweaking. And so I'm thinking that might be the best place to start with the responses that we've received from our colleagues. That said, does anybody want to start? We have comments from Connor, from Don, from Tom O'Connor, and from councillor Marilyn Richards. I believe that was it before. I did not respond because primarily I was the councillor who introduced the measure, along with some input from former councillor Pat Henry, or not some input, but we co-designed the initial submittal. And in the later, or mid-part of 2021, I submitted to our town's attorney, Jessie Belcher-Tim, the work product and asked him to give it some look over and tell us what he might have to offer. And in doing so, what ultimately came before the council for a first look was a reformatted rule content for Rule 15. And it was done at Jessie's recommendation, mostly tweaking semantics and not necessarily the spirit of the, you know, the actions inside the code of conduct. And it was also a reflection of his research, as well as an attorney for a number of municipalities, some of his firsthand experiences with, you know, a few Massachusetts, there's a tongue tie here, Massachusetts districts that wanted something similar. So he brought a broad look to it. So, long story short, the product that the council reacted to had been reviewed previously by our town council. And it brings us to today, the task to look at what this Rule 15 has to offer and take into consideration the input of the four councillors who did respond to it. So that said, where shall we? Don, why don't we start? We chatted informally for a few minutes about the issue of social media policy and how it can be part of a code of conduct or not, or the need to walk a fine balance there. So, Don.
In the proposal, it says, "General Conduct, Item 2", and it talks about being bound by the social media policy of the Eastlong Meadow Employees Handbook, the Town Council Rules and Other Applicable Laws, Bylaws and Regulations. Where I took disagreement with is the fact of the Eastlong Meadow Employee Handbook is designed for Eastlong Meadow employees. And I believe there should be a separation between the council, who is, and as well as the school committee, who are the only entities elected by the people of Eastlong Meadow, or in my case, I was appointed in this particular, but generally, the position is an elected position. And however, I don't have an issue with social media being included in the first section. It says in the article, "General Conduct, 1", "to only address members of the town council, town officials, or employees, residents, or other speakers, or meeting participant in a respectful tone with respectful choice of words, whether verbally or in writing." The "in writing", I think, is the way to get social media included without it being part of a outside written employee handbook. So I think we can add some language to the fact that "writing shall also include letters to the editor, writing shall also include, I mean, include but not limited to, social media posts and comments on other posts." I believe it said, "The whole purpose of this is to infuse civility, not the other C-word, which is control." And I think the more we try to keep this as a conduct of civility amongst ourselves, the public, the residents, and also members of our town government, as well as our employees and department heads, as well as specifically the town manager, I think that's going in the right direction. So again, I'm looking this through the eyes of civility, and I'm trying to see if there's ways we can take it out where it's the wrong person or persons getting control of our town government can use this as a way to stop legitimate free speech and legitimate dissension.
As a response to that, there is the issue of the fact that as elected officials, we fall under the category of special town employees. And I would agree that the bulk of the content in the Employees Handbook has virtually zero to do with an elected official or a board member or a commission. What I, when I look at that number two, "to be bound by the social media policy of the Eastlong Meadow Employees Handbook", "the Town Council Rules and All Other Applicable Laws, Bylaws or Regulations", I see the policy just in that string of all the other documents that as elected officials were bound by. But I'm not sure how to remove social media policy from that bullet, number two, because it is part of the parameters under which we're bound, you know, bound to operate. You know, we're obligated to uphold the Charter or obligated to comply with Mass General Law and so forth.
Yeah, I can respect that. I just think we need to take out, where, I mean, I understand we're special employees, that's one of, that's, but at the same time, we're not employees of the town of Eastlong Meadow. It's a distinction, so that someone brought an action against us, we have protection and so forth. So there's a policy, a longstanding policy, and anyone who's an elected official in Massachusetts is a special employee of that community. However, again, the ones who write the Employee Handbook is where I have an issue with. And I think it can be, and I have no problem with the asset stance. I'm just saying, we have to be aware of our history. If certain people get in control, they can say.
Yeah, you don't want to make it overly binding.
I do think if we take out "to be bound by Town Council Rules and all other applicable laws, bylaws, and regulations", that's fine. And then in a separate section, whether it's merged into Paragraph 1, to say, "respectful choice of words, whether verbally or in writing", "writing shall also include but not limited to, letters to the editor and poster comments on social media", I think we have that in there. I think it ties in, and it doesn't make us subject to rules that could be changed on the fly by whoever's writing this handbook in the year 2030.
I could live with what you just said. I think that's definitely some middle ground, because it does separate us from falling under the Employees Handbook, which addresses a number of things, you know, being prompt to work, you know, punching in and using a time clock if that's part of the particular department's requirement, what to do if you need to call out sick, those don't, none of that really is pertinent to the work we're required to do. But I do, can you repeat that again? I think you jotted it down somewhere.
To be bound by the Eastlong Meadow Town Council Rules and all other applicable laws and bylaws or regulations, and then remove social media policy of the Eastlong Meadow Employees Handbook, and then add it to the first line, "with respectful choice of words, whether verbally or in writing", "writing shall include but not be limited to letters to the editor and/or social media posts or comments", because you may not be having a page, but you could be making comments on one of the forums and so forth that, you know, it could be somewhat pejorative and mean-spirited, that has no place for that. You can be, you can disagree without being disagreeable.
Okay. Connor, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion. I hadn't, when I originally read through it, even thought of it from that perspective. Yeah, that the Eastlong Meadow Employees Handbook is technically written and managed by not us. So that would be potentially a conflict in the future, even though it's not at the present moment.
But it could be in the future.
All right. So I don't mind when this committee finishes its work, modifying the document so that the full council, when it comes to them, can see what, where we've added and subtracted. And to that end, unless one of you wants to do it, and I don't, I'm not married to needing to do it, but I'll volunteer to do it. Don, would you just send that verbiage to me? That way.
Word file, I can have it nice and cleaned up, at least my portion of it.
Right.
And obviously, if somebody wants to go further and add additional definition of what "in writing" means, that's, I'm fine.
I mean, we don't.
I just want to make sure that "in writing".
No, it's a good point. We're bound by somebody else's handbook, and we're trying to make this, you know, a document that we can march to.
Yeah.
So, Don, that was yours. Connor, you, your response was... Let me think. You made a good one that had struck me as being essential. And I noticed in review of some of the websites from the Mass Municipal Association, where they offer best practices around writing codes of conduct. They cite half a dozen, a handful of towns, Holden, Cambridge, help me out, Littleton, and another one, I have it here. I noticed in a number of them, Carver, that not necessarily inside the rules of conduct, but kind of in a prologue or preface, if you will, is a statement to the effect that every year, and pick a date, it doesn't matter, all councillors will receive and review a copy of the code of conduct and sign off on it that they have it and that they pledge to adhere or abide by it. I think that might be a good way for us to institutionalize the habit of always looking back, just like as any municipal employee, every two years you are required to take the state ethics training around conflict of interest. And elected officials are asked to take the open meeting law refresher course every couple of years. So this, to me, would fall into that kind of mindset that, you know, a five-minute refresher on the rules and a sign-off can't hurt anybody. It just, particularly for new members. So if you said, you know, "our town elections are in June", make it July 1st or September 1st, if you want to avoid summer months. And it's just a housekeeping measure that the council is accustomed to going through.
Perhaps we make it part of the council reorganization that we do.
Well, yep, it could be. Right, exactly. That aligns perfectly.
Yeah. Because in theory, I mean, we could have, in theory, three new people after this next election.
Right. And you're always going to have a new face at some point.
And so that's, it'd be good right on the onset, when the person gets sworn in, they get a copy of this and understand that they're going to be voting on, or some type of statement at the next meeting by everyone. And that would also apply to if somebody comes, gets appointed. Let's say it wasn't myself, it was some other person. That person, after they're swearing in, probably will need to just acknowledge receipt of it or something, within a reasonable period of time upon receipt.
So is it fair to say we could come up with some verbiage to create that in somewhat of a preamble to the whole, to the whole body of work there? Before we start looking at general conduct, insert it more as an introductory paragraph? Or do you think it should belong somewhere embedded in the document itself?
Yeah, perhaps. It's just like a quick statement before we even get to the general conduct, because it seems like each of those, like, subsections are talking about specific topics or something.
What do you think, Don?
I think basically move Paragraphs 1, 2, 3 down and create a new paragraph, Section 1 into "General Conduct", right off the top, and say, "The council shall, at its first meeting of the new year", or, you know, vote to affirm, or again, I'm not thinking, you know, if there's better words, off yourself, the contact, the content of this, of Rule 15. And I think that would be, that would be up there, right off the top. And then go to Item 2, which is formerly Item 1, Item 3.
All right, that, that makes sense.
And tweak the wording.
Yep, it makes it fluid.
Because I think it's important to be, have awareness, say, "Well, I wasn't aware of it", and it'll say, "Well, it's now part of the rules, and we're going to have it at the first meeting or as soon as reasonably thereafter."
Are you okay with that, Connor?
Yeah, I think so. And we could, probably for the two parts of it, saying, for new members at the time of being sworn in.
Right, right. And that, if, well, that, I would think that that was something that Jeannie would take care of. If we have midstream, someone resigns for whatever reason or can't fulfill a term, and you have to bring a new face in midterm, if you will, then that's something I think the clerk could, when she swears that person in, she can equip him or her with all of the documents that they need to be aware of.
Yeah, I think that would work.
Okay. All right. Well, I will run with what you said, Don, and try to insert that in there and come up with some benign language to make that, that point. Okay, Connor, there was one other piece that I wanted to talk about that you suggested. And you referenced the language in the Cambridge Code of Conduct around the word, the two words, improper influence, specifically where a councillor might insinuate himself or herself too much onto a particular topic, or get involved with a particular town department, or however sway the thinking of another entity. I think that strikes me as something that might be useful. Did you have thoughts on where you would think it would be placed?
I was thinking that it would potentially just be like another bullet under the "General Conduct" section, which I think would be number four, or if we're adding the other yearly one, maybe it's number five or something.
Yes, because it would refer to written or verbal communication and just the whole mindset of being a representative of all the people in the, in the community versus aligning with a specific few for a particular, perhaps, benefit. Do you think, Don, that it would be better served anywhere else?
Well, my concern is the language improper influence. And I think part of our job as a councillor is to try to advocate policy and in a positive way, influence people. So the word improper is basically, it could be interpreted one way versus another, depending on what your side of the issue is. So I would say, if we're going to put something in there replacing proper influence with the word term discourteous, because I think when people elect me, you, you, they want us not just to be followers, but to try to have policy and to try to influence in a positive way. And improper, what does that mean? Does that mean if somebody takes offense?
Yeah, that's subject to how you read.
I think that's what my concern is. I think, as I said, the whole purpose behind this is to promote civility, being courteous with each other, respectful, but not being sheep, not being somebody who's, you know, we're not elected to, we have a town council president and vice president to lead the council, but not to dictate.
Tell us how to think, right.
How to think. I mean, that's what the people of Eastlong Meadow have elected us for. So I just, I'm just concerned about the control path, and it might be taking us a little bit away from what I'm hoping that this is for, is to create civility and being courteous.
I suppose where I was thinking with the, with that potential section, and I couldn't come up with better words off the top of my head for, instead of improper influence, was sort of a better way of saying, it was just to make it clear that we're intended to stay in each other's lane, that like, these are the roles that the council has, these are the things that the manager's responsible for, we shouldn't be trying to do the manager's job. Yeah.
I think that's already in the Charter and in there what the roles are. And I just think it creates an extra, you know, Cambridge has an extra level of layer that they just have to hope that whoever is in charge of their form of government doesn't just take, take offense to it. Because like you said, I can make a statement and somebody says, "Why do you sound so mean?" So I'm not, what do you mean? I didn't, I'm not being mean. And they'll say, "Well, yeah, well, I'm bothered by this", and I'm going, "I, let me look in the mirror and figure this one out." So I think, like I said, this, the purpose here is conduct of civility, courteous, respect, terms to that, terms along those lines, but not terms that deal with, you know, improper influence. I'm trying, if I'm advocating to the council, I'm trying to influence you to agree with a proposal and bring it together, or amendment and stuff. And if someone feels that that's improper, it's, I don't think that's what this is all about, at least in Eastlong Meadow. If I'm wrong, this is, as I said, this is a living document.
Right.
Don, you were wrong. Cambridge was right. You didn't consider.
You're right. And the other thing I want to say for anyone who watches this later is, what, when this committee's work is done, the bottom line is to present back to the council our recommendations. There still will be conversation at the council level, and that end product may have some more tweaks in it. So this is not a finite decision here by any means tonight. It's to kind of do the legwork for the full council, which is usually what a subcommittee is charged to do. Listening to what you said, Don, I could, I'd be okay with staying away from those words. I think, Connor, I hear what you said, that those words sounded good. And your intent was that everyone needs to, you know, I think you started to say it, "Stay in your lane", you know, sometimes when we, and it's easy to do when you get, you know, involved every day in this committee or that committee and staying on top of town events, that it's, the lines can be easily and innocently muted with little effort. And our responsibility is to use our own effort to understand where the barriers are, where the guardrails are, and to stay with what is, we're elected to do. So I would be okay with not adding that into any part of this document.
I would be for now, too. I think it was mostly just reiterating what part of the Charter already spoke to, just to make it abundantly clear. But if it removes some gray area in the meantime, I'm fine with that.
Okay. And so where are we now? Did we get everything, Connor, you asked about?
I think in one of the other bullet points was under "General Conduct", what was currently number three. In that paragraph there, it had spoken to about like residents, and I was just suggesting that we change residents to all members of the public, just so that it makes it clear.
Well, yes, because there could be a guest in the audience who you may be in a debate with and who doesn't live in town. So remind me the, where, the place it's in.
General Conduct, number three, it said, "or verbally abusive conduct toward any resident", I would just say, "toward any member of the public".
Okay, so member of the public. Got it.
And then I think my only other thought was, we listed council president throughout it. Should we also include like, or council vice president? In the event that both of them could be.
Wouldn't that, would that be assumed?
Perhaps, yeah.
Just to keep the, to not over, what's the word I'm looking for? Over.
Add extra words just for.
Right, overburdened, get to be too verbose with it. Because, you know, if a council president is not available to perform a particular action, then the vice president steps in, and whether it's run a meeting, start another subcommittee, you know, whatever it is, the vice president stands in the place of. So I don't, to me, it's kind of inherent in that, that if the president can't do it, then the vice president takes over. Does that make sense?
That works for me.
Can I just go back just to the general public comment? Is there a way, general public, something, I'm trying to think, I'm struggling with trying to find where "general public" dealing with the town as opposed to "general public", for instance, I may have a couple of US senators that I'm particularly not fans of. And I may have, like I said, strong opinions of them because how they're affecting one of my businesses or something of that nature. And I may post on social that this person is an idiot or something of that nature. Well, that's a member of the general public. So if Senator so-and-so from the state of so-and-so is, you know, I just don't, I'm just trying to find a way to say the general public in its dealings with the town of Eastlong Meadow, to be focused on, you know? Am I overthinking this perhaps? I don't know. I just, residence is a clear, clear thing, and I, and I understand, we're gonna, we have attorneys, we have developers, we have other people that are. But they're dealing with us, so it's not just a blanket statement of anyone in the public, you know? I think it should be. Somehow saying in their dealings with the town of East Long Meadow.
Members of the public in their dealings, all right, that, that, that sets it apart.
It does, I think that's good.
Yeah, that's more distinct. Okay, we're good on that. We also have input from. Marilyn Richards and let me find that one. She states. That's why I can't figure out what she states.
Agree with the annual review, so I think we got that covered.
Yep, she talked about. She would like, uh, she's asking under. The category interaction with town manager, that another bullet. Be added that says counselors are to uphold the intent of the town charter, our article two. Sections two dash, section two dash nine regarding access to information. At no time shall a counselor or counselors engage in. Confrontational discussion with a town manager and or department head regarding information that has not. Been submitted in writing to the town manager or department head. At least five days prior to the council meeting. Um, I, I know that, that specifically is already in place in the charter. Correct? Yes, because she cites it.
I think if we already have it covered in the charter, um.
We're bound by the charter.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, and I think we have language in there that will be bound by the charter in terms, I don't, I. Don't know if we need the redundancy. Because, um, I think it's, it's. Yeah, because I, I know we have up here, um. To be bound, okay, we're. By Lisa Council, maybe a section, uh, fifteen, which will be new section three, we add. Town council rules of, and the East Long Meadow Town Charter and all applicable laws and bylaws or, or regulations.
It's already mentioned.
Yeah, but just add that, I mean, trying to see where the charter.
Well, if it's mentioned once, we don't need to even mention it again. Where do we go with that one?
I would say we add that too, uh, I don't think we have, we have the word charter specifically mentioned per se in general conduct.
All right, so we go back to this, that would be, will now be, it's two right now, but it will become three.
Right, so you know, we're, there'll be, uh, rules, uh, you know, be bound by the town council rules. The East Long Meadow Town Charter. Uh, and applicable laws, bylaws and regulations.
Just insert these long metal. Town charter.
Yeah.
Really somewhere in there.
Yeah, I think that's a good compromise. I mean, originally, I think probably both Marilyn and I had come from a similar. We came up with two different wordings of it, but probably the same sort of intent in what we were.
And the intent I'm thinking is to, uh, not put something on the agenda, just. Spontaneously. In the middle of an agenda that doesn't speak to it or to, um. Perhaps catch a member off guard, is, is that you think the intent that they want to put, he or she wants to. Get something on the record, on the microphone that isn't anywhere on the agenda.
And I, I also think it's important for the town manager, whoever is getting thi- this question. To say. Timeout, this has not been delivered, let's agree to talk next week.
That has to happen too, and or, the president needs to say that has not been brought forth yet.
Yeah.
And so, um, I think one of the things that, um. I took part in a webinar from MMA back. April, May, perhaps, and they offer it two or three times a year about, you know. Civility, respect, codes of conduct, and one of the things that I came away with from that is the, the gentleman who was doing. Most of the, the talking said, a lot of, you can have all the pretty code of conducts you want, but you have to. Um, the, the chairperson. Or president, whoever he or she may be, needs to know how to use the gavel in an appropriate way. Meaning what you just said, uh, timeout counselor, uh, that has not been, uh, discussed yet, and so. Um, we'll push it off to our next meeting, or simply you're out of order, we can't continue with that right now. Having been in that seat. A couple of years ago, it's, it's, you always walk a fine line, you don't want to just gavel someone and look like a tyrant. And at the same time, you want to, uh. Air on the side of the democratic process. Now, obviously, if someone has. Offered the floor and they become abusive or profane or whatever the case. Obviously, you called them out of order, but, um. It's important that in a meeting, a, a sitting president knows when to say timeout. We, we're not talking about that tonight, but we will speak about it and our clerk will get it on the next agenda, and in the meantime. Can you submit to me the nature of your concern? Then the manager gets it. Uh, I think we just have to be more clear on how. We get to a certain path versus. You know, just out of the blue, and by the way.
I agree.
I think so, too.
All right, so we are agreeing that inserting up in the. General conduct part should suffice there, and Marilyn's other comment was that there should be a sign off. And we've addressed that already, which is good, so we already have some consensus. And then we have Counselor O'Connor. And his, um. Comment is actually, he did a. Preferred way of when you alter a document, just use red with the strikeout and blue with when you're adding words, so. That helps as long as you print it in color. His, uh, comment is to. Under general conduct, the, the current bullet three. Intends to strike out the majority of that language. And the language is that any violation of these council rules, including specifically, but not limited to, any. Disrespectful behavior, he recommends unprofessional behavior instead. Personal attacks or verbally, verbal abusive conduct toward any resident, town employee, counselor. Or any other individual will not be tolerated and will be dealt with appropriately at the discretion of the council president. Including the possibility of a vote for public censure where appropriate. He also suggests continuing with taken by a majority vote of the council. I guess my reaction to that is, um. In every single code of conduct that I've read, and that I would say they total about six or seven. Every one of those books or documents has a paragraph in some form. Speaking about when an, an individual counselor's behavior. Uh, crosses over and, uh, there, there is a mechanism that the president. Can take certain actions and they all re- speak to censure. They don't, as elected officials, we can't unelect a counselor. The only way if, if an individual's actions were egregious enough that that individual, uh. Shouldn't be on the council. Only the public can unelect. A sitting counselor, and the way to do that is through the recall election, which. Recall process, which is very clearly spelled out in the. Charter, and it's an arduous process, but it's a fair process. Involving a getting, obtaining a minimum of five hundred votes and. And then an additional five hundred to get on the ballot of either a special election or the closest town election. But. Absent the ability to. Remove an elected official from our own body. I, I think the spirit of rule three is that these are the consequences. If the behavior, it becomes outside the rules in the code of conduct. And the council rules or the charter rules in general, and, um, public censure. Is, is one of the very few we, as a council, have available to us, um. There's also the opportunity to, a couple of the documents spoke about. In, uh, not indemnifying the counselors' actions, which is somewhat of a, like a no confidence. In, in the particular action. Uh, or removing the individual from a sitting committee. So those are the kinds of internal things that are available. For a council, it's the only mechanism of discipline, if you will, and. I would be opposed to striking out that entire, uh, paragraph. I could certainly understand changing disrespectful with unprofessional. Um, but I, I don't know that I would need, I'd be comfortable with a taken by a majority voter of the council because. Uh, if it's obvious enough that a sitting president feels they have to call for censure. Or remove an individual from committee, it's likely going to be obvious enough to the other members of the body. That's where I'm coming from.
And in addition. If the sitting precedent was going rogue and had it out for one particular council member. The rest of the council can call for reorganization and get rid of that, that sitting president.
Right. Exactly, even under Robert's rules, there are, uh, uh, universal standards for how you. Uh, deal with someone that's gone rogue or off the reservation or whatever terms you want to use, so. I, I don't feel comfortable taking that out because that is the only recourse, um, a body like. Uh, a, a council or a board or a commission. Has at its disposal to deal with, um, difficult behaviors.
I would agree with not removing it because I think to your point, it's really the only. Teeth that the, the document would have.
I mean, it doesn't remove anybody's, I mean. Usually elected officials, and we are part of, of communities that give. Offer a stipend to the, you know, to acknowledge the efforts of your work, nobody gets rich on a stipend. Nor do they run for office based on a statement, it stipend, it's just, uh, an. Honorarium almost, just in respect for your work, uh, so it's nothing here says you lose your stipend. Nothing here says you're not allowed to vote in town elections, we're just talking about. Internal. Internal consequences as for a member of a sitting body. Don, how do you feel about that?
I agree, I agree with you on that one, I think, like I said, if, if, if it came personal vendetta and they just. Person decided to use that power as council president. Uh, inappropriately, I would like to hope that the rest of the council recognizes it and removes that individual as council president.
Right, I mean, you start immediately by ta- voting to table it. And then you introduce the measure to reorganize and remove the, the. The individual who, uh, is gone rogue, as like you said. Okay, so, um. Is there anything else that we're missing from? I don't want to overlook anything else from Mr. O'Connor.
There were some further at the bottom of that page under the interaction.
Manager section, which we haven't gone into yet, but, yeah.
Um, he's suggesting that in number four, refer all resident and insert the words. Resident and taxpayers.
Yeah, and also an item one, too, uh, that is in the best interest of our residents and taxpayers.
Right. So when, let me back up to number one and not go out of order, endeavor to establish a sound, clearly defined. Policies that will direct and support the town manager. Comma, insert new language, that is in the best interest of the, our residents or the, our residents and taxpayers.
I mean, uh, I mean, it's, it is sort of a statement of the obvious, I'm not sure it's. Not, I don't mind it having in there, because if we have a town manager that is not acting in the best interest of our residents and taxpayers, that's going to be an issue. But, um, I, I don't have a problem if it's.
I don't, yeah, I, I, I can live with that, it just defines it a little bit further.
Yeah.
Connor, you okay with that?
Yeah, I think it's fine with or without it.
No, an item four, he has refer all residents and taxpayers complaints. To the town manager via the council president as opposed to.
Directly to the manager.
Yeah.
You know, um. A complaint could be something as simple as, I, I've had people call me and say, my rubber didn't get picked up. Well. Town manager isn't going to run out and pick it up for you or a member of the committee, but. That doesn't necessarily need to go to the town manager, what I've said to these, uh, folks is. Call the health department, that's the mechanism that will either by phone or email. They take every single one of those complaints as it relates to trash removal, where's your address and there is follow through, but. If reading it like that, then I should be calling the president or the town manager because somebody didn't get their trash removed, I don't, I don't know.
I have, I have some language, I think, to help clean that up. If we put down in the beginning, as appropriate. Refer all residents to, uh, you know, complaints as appropriate, so a complaint about. How come there are nip bottles on the street, made up appropriate for the town manager? So I think the term is, it's a self-checking using as appropriate, as appropriate for her job or his job.
If something also on the lines of, you know, I, there's a, a fox running through the backyards and, you know, I. I, you don't turn that over to the manager, you call. The, in this case, the, the, uh, animal control or. If you're not sure, the police and that kicks right over to animal control, so, um, as appropriate. But then we have to rely on everyone's good common sense on that.
But at least it's, it creates a safety with the language as it stands, it could be. It could be the Fox questions and the, in the nip bottles and the. And, um, how come this lawn isn't mowed, questions and things like that, and then if the language stands with this amendment. It also would get the town council president involved, asking that same question to the town manager, so I think. I think if we use a standard of appropriateness, I think, I think, I think that should be sufficient. And I said, if it doesn't work, then we find out there's a lot of inappropriate questions being asked that, that aren't apropos, then we, we, we tighten up.
You're right, this is a living document, it's never going to just be.
Nope.
Carved in stone, or should it?
Yeah.
I think adding as appropriate is fine, but I wouldn't necessarily want to put. Or make the change to say residents and taxpayers only, because then I think. Or make the change to say residents and taxpayers only because then I think that excludes counselors' own complaints.
Well, I, I, I had it, I just wrote a side note earlier today and I left the language in item four the same. Except for the words as appropriate before it. So as appropriate, refer all complaints to the town manager for resolution. And only discuss them at town council meeting if such solution fails.
So you would leave out the via the council president?
Yeah. Yeah. I, I think the council president, I think, I, I think if I had something that would be. Appropriate to the town manager, if I saw Mary and I said. Here's a question or something, I, I don't know, getting Mike involved in something rises to the, a level. So it might be a question of. Yeah, I, I'm making this up. I, I noticed that. The. I, I'm trying to think of something that's just, that's somewhat inane that doesn't rise. But it's something I could ask Mary to say, hey, again, I'm making this up.
I know, I know.
And I could say, hey, Mary, I'm walking by your office and your door isn't closed and I'm hearing conversations I shouldn't be hearing. I shouldn't have to go to, to Mike to ask him to ask her. I should, that's an appropriate concern that I had. Again, again, people. Never happened. I made it up. It did not. I've never walked by your office, heard a complaint. I'm using it for the sake of discussion. So that's just one example that came to my mind hypothetically. That could come in that, you know, I, I think dealing with things person to person as appropriate. It reduces matters that don't necessarily rise to the level of council president being involved. If it became a, 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 a big matter where. She's not showing up to work, not returning phone calls, not doing things like that, yeah, then, then the council president.
Well, yes, because then that, then there's recourse for the council.
I mean, we all know complaints are levels. There's certain complaints, I feel like, yes, this is a problem. To, this is important because you're raising the question constituent, but not to the same level as another thing. So I think an appropriateness standard. Would, would work in my opinion.
Okay.
I like the appropriateness thing and I think leaving out the. President because I think that's less of a. Just general code of conduct for behavior of. Counselors being, you know, respectful versus just how does the council choose to communicate with its own. Members and make sure people know what's going on. I think that's more of a communication policy, not a code of conduct policy per se.
Okay. We're good on that. Uh, the last piece that Mr. O'Connor has. Suggestions for is. Under interactions with other counselors. Under item five. Ensure that communication from the town council or an individual counselor regarding any constituent concerns. Counselor concerns or inquiry, inquiry to town employees or officials should be coordinated by. And through the council president whenever possible. And the, the recommendation is to add, i.e. Outside of the council meeting for sake of transparency. I'm not sure I'm understanding that.
I don't necessarily understand it either because I would also think that. If something were to happen in the meeting, that's more transparent being on. Public record and video than otherwise.
Yeah, I was struggling with the i.e. outside the council for the sake of. Outside of the council for the sake of transparency.
Well, Connor, you make a good point. Let's say I, I'm the president and I say to you, I, let's talk after the meeting. And we come to some understanding about whatever the topic is. And then for whatever the reason, I don't follow through on it and you say. Well, I talked to you outside of the council meeting about it and then I say, well, it's not on the agenda. It never came out in public and so it's hard to prove. Is what I'm saying and that, to me, it gives rise to more. Uh, to, it, it just muddies the water instead of making it transparent. I prefer. As you said earlier, to have it just be. On, on the record. I'm not sure transparency.
Word, the word discretion somehow in here might be appropriate because discretion. Certain things can be. Done. Um, a question about, hey, you know what, council president, you. You really allowed a lot to be said during town manager minutes in meeting. I mean, you may want to just reel back on that. Uh, I wouldn't want to call out the council president. On that in a public forum. I think discretion should prevail just as if, and if it continues where. The town managers' reports become. Off, off the chart.
They wonder.
Yeah, and, and not, and not really on point where the town manager is getting. Questions that aren't necessarily apropos to what she's doing or in, in the. You know, where it should be in a future meeting. I think that, I think sometimes questions can be asked and, and ask and tell the town council president, says, you know. You're, you're kind of allowing a little bit too long of a leash as far as allowing comments that really aren't apropos to. What that position in our meeting is. As, you know, and that creates less fight because it can be done off. You know, and then if it continues, then you bring it up in council comments and say, hey, council president.
We need time limits in our agenda.
Kind of crazy, you know, we're, we're finding backdoor ways to getting in, information into our meetings that aren't, that's not part of our agenda. You know, again, that's just an example. It's not, it's not an actual case in point. It's just for, for sake of discussion.
I suppose the way it was written without the suggested edition. Doesn't even speak to what medium it had to be conducted through, so I think it leaves it. Open to discretion, whether that's in a meeting or. Outside of a meeting. I don't know.
So don't add the words in.
Let me see if I can think, think of something that has that effect without having that effect. Um, putting those, that wording in there, I mean. Ensure that all communication to town council, individual council regarding any constituent concern, counselor concerns or inquiry of town employees officials. Should be coordinated by and through the council president whenever possible. Should be. Should be discreetly coordinated by and through the council president whenever possible because these wherever possible, it seems to say. Use some form of discretion. I don't, I don't know, just thought.
Yeah, I, I think. It, it, is the intent to avoid, as you said, Don. You know, blurting something out that could be regarded as a little blunt or.
Could be a learn, a learning moment.
Where you say, hmm, you know, and I'll just, I'll, I'll deal with him through email. That's, I don't want to put this out there. I, I, I think. I, I don't know that I'd add that language at the, the suggested language and I'd let that bullet stay the way it is. And also there's other pieces in this whole document that speak to respectful choice of words. Dealing with, you know, respect when you're talking about other people on the council or, you know. In the, on a commission or whatever. I feel as though it's going to. It's going to beg all kinds of interpretations there and do. Be less advantageous.
And I think we also have to keep the. Open meeting law in mind too. I mean, if it's just a. Particular constituent or counselor or something that. You know, you needed to have a. Resolution with or something, then yeah, that could be in or outside of a meeting, but you know, if it was a particular topic that. Now spoke to the level of needing to talk to more than two people. I mean, now you can't say that that needs to be conducted outside of the meeting because that's not true.
Right.
You know, another term, maybe the word appropriate again is regarding any appropriate constituent concerns. Because if somebody's calling up and saying. I have a problem with. Something that's. You know. Not necessarily rising to. I, I mean, I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm not trying to minimize somebody's concerns, but some things could be. Like, uh, my neighbor is too loud or something of that nature. Every single any, it says any. Constituent concern. It doesn't provide a filter. Of which concerns, you know. I would say again, appropriate and your appropriate constituent concern because not everything is appropriate for the council. Something, some constituent concerns really are appropriate for the department heads that deal with it. They could, you know, somebody constituent says my, my child's getting a D in class and I, I, I'm bothered by it and you should. Withhold funds to the school committee because, uh, school department because of that. Again, folks, I'm making this up and. At what point? So I think having some stretch, some, something, some standard. Like appropriateness, I think might work.
I'd be fine with putting the word appropriate between in constituent.
I would strike any and add appropriate. Is that what you're saying?
Sure, any appropriate or you can even have the word any in there if you want or. Or, or just either way works.
Any, you're right, any can be minutia.
Yeah, anything. Says, hey, you know, I was upset about this and how come you're not bringing it up to the council and all this? And I said, well, it's not really appropriate for. Our, what our business under the charter. There's no standard of, of what level of complaint necessary. This is, this is a total, everything, bring them all in.
Okay, and then the last part of. Mr. O'Connor suggesting. A full paragraph. Called protocols for the president. The president should always CC the VP and all communication to anyone. To keep the VP in the loop, the president should generally CC the entire council. On any significant communications sent to the town manager or outside parties. As general information that will in all likelihood make the news. For instance, bank robbery, significant fire, accidental. Accident involving a death unless this would somehow violate HIPAA or open meeting law. And the president will follow up in writing to questions submitted to him or her, to them. In writing from counselors in three to five business days. Though, to me, those are. All appropriate actions that a, a president ought to do in the interest of. Communication and. Transparency, but it is not the. President's job to communicate to the council that. There has been a attempted bank robbery in town or there's been. Fire, that's up to either if, if it's public safety, the police chief. Or the fire chief and they both go to the manager with it and the manager. Disperses that information as appropriate, so I, I don't believe that. Number two there is, is outside of our lane. If you will. And the issue of, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I would, I would agree with that assessment because usually we do get some of that information. Today, but as you just said, it usually funnels from the department through the chiefs and then. To the town manager and then ultimately to us, but it wouldn't come the opposite way through the, the council president to us.
Yeah, I think. Um, the points that counselor O'Connor makes have validity to them. But I'm not so sure it belongs under the rule fifteen umbrella. I think it might be possible if we are updating the obligations, the duties of the council president.
It would go there and there is a page in the rules for that.
But not, because here it talks about council conduct. The council conduct to the public, the council conduct to the community, the council conduct to the town manager. And council conduct with each other as a collective council, whether you're council president, council vice president, council members. So I think that's what the spirit I'm reading of rule fifteen is. And if we start getting into the individual. Positions within the council and that individual, I think that belongs in the duties of the council president, the duties of the council. Not diminishing what he's saying. I just don't know if this is necessarily the home for it.
I would agree, especially since, as you mentioned earlier at the beginning of this, if the. If this whole new rule for code of conduct is about the civility of things. This is more about the specific communication protocol.
Right, it's, it's about practices, that, that's a bit, a practice, you know, how are you going to send information? As council president to your, your call, council colleagues.
Oh, I agree, I agree with Tom on a lot of these points. I mean, it said in the earlier, it was very tough to find out what's going on. We're fine. I was finding out stuff at the Dunkin' Donuts that I should have found out through. Uh, town hall, but so is obviously this is an area that needs communication, needs improvement, but I'm not sure if it necessarily needs to be. Put in rule fifteen, uh, I, it should be put in somewhere or clarified, but not necessarily under, uh, rule fifteen.
Right. Well, that concludes all of the recommendations from our council colleagues. I'm looking at the time and we're already an hour and fifteen minutes in. And we've not gone through. Anything else that we might see here that's troubling, so what is everyone's pleasure?
Yeah, if you send me over, like I said, a word version of it, I can tweak some of the language on it and then we can kind of put a final product together. Of our, you know, to send back to the council.
So. I'm thinking about the calendar. We have a meeting next Tuesday, which means it would need to go to Jamie. By like noon time on this Friday. Is that possible, do you think?
Weather permitting, I mean, I, I'll be, you know, as long as we don't lose internet with the storm or anything, I can, I can do some work from home and.
And then if you give it back to me, I've taken notes on.
Yeah, my, my changes aren't that as, you know, are, are that substantive. If you've taken notes and you want to send. If you want to put your changes in, send it back to us and we'll just either redline or make a couple more comments and then as long as consistent with what we discussed and. I think we can get it over to.
Genie in time.
Deadline as long as, you know, as long as that storm keeps people working.
Right. I need to get, this, this file came directly from Genie. So, and it's in PDF, so I need to have her unlock it. I'll do that tomorrow.
Okay.
And send a word and then I can put in what I know and you can add that language and anything else that.
Yep.
Uh, may have been missed here. Okay. So that said, that was a lot of good work done and. This should tweak it enough for all of us to be able to live with it. And of course, it still needs to be officially voted on and if there's any other tweaks, we can do that in live time on Tuesday. So if there's nothing else, then I think we are done for today and. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
So second.
All right. Roll call vote. I'm a yes, Don?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
All right, so we are good. And Don and I will do that work and I'll see you both next Tuesday.
Sounds like a plan.
All right, thanks for your help.
Thanks, see you.